And invite everybody. First, we have the art, are we're in person finally again for our annual holiday lunch Tuesday, the 13th. And I hope everybody can come because it really is the best opportunity for us to thank our fabulous staff. And we also invite some of the major volunteers like our journal editor and such. Is that Steve there? Okay, the next thing is, I, I wish that everybody could attend the now Montgomery chapter dinner, which is on December 6. What is it? December 6th, December 6th in the evening?
Where is it?
It's at the It's in Rockville.
Yeah.
I think it's a, Linda sent you the invitation. And so it would be great if we had a good showing there.
What time is it?
Six to eight thirty.
I think it's, isn't it in Rockville?
It is in Rockville. I don't have the timeline.
It is.
I remember getting that maybe I did and I.
And we were trying to get the state delegation there.
It's at the Ramada Wyndham Hotel. And they, as our councilor is saying, it's, it's our opportunity to find out what the, the, the leagues. And our legislative agenda is starting in January when the session begins. And there are legislators there and often county council members come. So it's a great opportunity. And then, and then also on Friday, December 16th is the committee for Montgomery and that's at seven thirty in the morning at Bethesda, New Marriott. And the committee for Montgomery is a very unique organization. They basically lobbies Indianapolis on behalf of Montgomery County. And it's an organization that's government is, is in the I spent a board years ago, but, and, and the new governor is going to be there. And I think maybe the other statewide officials. So it would be great if you could come to one or all of those events, especially our, our lunch. And with that, I noticed that I see that our president has arrived. And so I was, I was just in the, in the interim, I was just reminding everybody about the three events. Upcoming. Okay, so I will turn it over to our distinguished president.
Good evening, everyone.
Well, he's opening up his computer. My calendar says that breakfast is at seven AM.
Yeah, seven thirty. We can carpool there too.
But it's seven thirty. You said seven thirty. My calendar says seven.
I, it doesn't say seven thirty and the speech won't be till a little later. But you, I think you'd all appreciate it and, and we get a lot of meeting colleagues and meeting other people. Meeting our county and state elected officials.
Great. Thank you. Apologies for being late.
I should make, I thought this was five, so I there's some stuff and I came here at like five oh five and then I biked home to a few more errands. Didn't quite time it right, but close. Very happy. So I want to start off with a discussion of the process since we now have some lessons learned, some experiences with several different building permit applications or sort of like pre-applications. So this is not intended to be a look at any specific application or the merits of any particular application or our decisions on the applications. It's really, I was hoping we could talk to people about the process and in particular, I'm a little concerned that well, let me start by saying my understanding or the way I characterize that process is that effort to engage with residents and contractors or homeowners in a positive way and encourage communications. We, we set pre-meetings, but we've also allowed, encouraged free, free building permits to come to us before they've gone to the county. So that we can then look at whatever their various request is and when we started down that way, I thought that made great sense. But now I'm concerned that we're getting into a, or there's the potential of being in a game of what, where somebody will come in and say, well, we'd like a seven foot variance and we say no, and then they come back the next month and say, we'd like a six foot variance. We said no, then maybe it's a five foot, it's three and a half foot. And so it's a process that I guess the downside of process is, is it allows people to come to us at very low cost to, in terms of a formal building permit application to try things out. And then it means that when we're looking at the application, we don't know if the county has would approve it as is. And I'm also concerned that we could be in a position where we might approve a variance because of our understanding of what the whole package is. But technically speaking, all we're doing is approving the variance and then they could say the homeowner, the contractor, the architect could change their plans. And if it wasn't changing the variance, it was changing stormwater management or something, if that wasn't what the variance was about. I think we'd be stuck. I think we'd have no recourse. Whereas if we're looking at the whole building package, we could say we approve this building permit with these variances and with these conditions of permanent presence in the patio or whatever the case may be, we would all be perfect. But it's something I've been thinking about. I'm just going on the table and asking folks to have similar concerns, different concerns, maybe we've observed other things, lessons learned on the process.
Historically, has it always been that they went to the county first, got a permit, then came to us?
I think so. Can you clarify that now?
Yeah, in, in general, yes. I think the, the the primary example where that isn't the case is if an applicant comes to us and their plans conform with the county code, but they need a, they would require a variance from the town of Somerset. And so in those instances, historically, we've allowed them to get some feedback ahead of time so that they can basically, so they know whether or not they would be able to get approval for the variance from Somerset before they spend tens of thousands of dollars on the Montgomery County permitting process. But, you know, as, as the, as the council president said, I think especially with the stormwater component added to our code, it has the potential to present difficulties because variances can be given with conditions and without a holistic look at everything that's being considered. It makes it difficult, I think, for the council to add conditions that might that might improve the site, the impact on the site and, but without the full breadth of information, especially related to stormwater management.
Because that was like the, the first time we kind of started that pre-planning was based on stormwater management for the most part, right?
Okay, so one other historical fact I want to add is, and councillor Barr is very familiar with this, is that, you know, the problem, the, the problem begins when somebody either decides they want to alter their property or they want to buy a property. So several years ago, this whole issue of having some kind of guidelines or welcome letter, so to speak, so that before somebody even begins to consider a property, they have some idea of what the challenges might be. But the last council was not able to ever come to any kind of agreement on, on, on that. But I do think that this would be another good idea to consider. Because in my view, by the time, I think that the ultimate goal should be that by the time any application gets to this council, then it's basically rubber stamp because everything's worked out. So there are so many problems that start from the beginning and perhaps councillor Barr would like to elaborate on that. And share his view on that.
It, it is. Better think about it from the applicant's point of view is what I'm going to try to say. Okay. And as has been made clear, if they come through Montgomery County first without approaching the town, they've already invested a lot of money into the application. They've got approval from the major player, which is Montgomery County. And so they're arriving in a almost frame of mind as, we're almost there, we're just going to get through this small town mindset. And that's the way it was before we started changing things a bit. The idea, first idea was this welcome letter that, that number of residents tried to come together, which is to alert them very early on that there is actually a town process and town concern and we are structured so that we are strict on the county. That is the way our code.
So, which, which I think Cherry Chase Village does, for example, right? They have, they have some guidelines and information so that people will, so that potential purchasers and also existing residents understand what the challenges are.
We don't do that.
No, we don't do that because it became very controversial and political. And the last group of council members did not have, did not have the state of mind or courage or whatever to take, to take it on.
Yeah. Now, what we're doing with the variance process is in fact signaling to them that we are strict. In other words, that happened empirically because they come in and they have caught the variance group, you know, that you're having to deal with council and it's, it's that principle that county is strict on the county. So from the applicant's perspective, it makes sense to go to the town first because you pass the stricter hurdle at that point. And then going to the county for the general code for the county is, is a good way for them to do it. But as Steve is pointing out, we don't hear the whole story when the only variance is left. So we don't quite know what we're getting into. And some of that happened with the last one because I brought up stormwater because the world was impacted by stormwater. What we're doing, that's not part of the, the plans on variance. They don't have to talk about it.
We've made a lot of code changes in the last six, eight months. A lot of that. I think it's still early is my take. You know, it's still very early in the sort of grand arc of these things. You know, if you look at the history of the code itself, we've made pretty historic changes. Right? I mean, we really brought a lot of things that would normally not be part of the variance process. And now more likely to be part of the variance process. For instance, Shannon, you, you mentioned that in the course of the stormwater update, we introduced a new stamp, which is this pre-meeting, pretty historically unique, I think. So my initial response to your question is, I personally feel I need more time. And to see more cases, you know, it still feels early to me. And it's, I don't want to calibrate in one direction. We have given a very handful of cases. So that's one immediate reaction I have to your question. The second reaction I have is this is independent of the changes we've seen and the hearings we've been on is that personally, I always feel I don't want to be in a situation where I've been forced to make technical, you know, sort of, I need to make a technical decision. What is this technical pain? This stormwater intervention, the balcony definition, you know, that, that's when I feel uncomfortable. I get out of my bed. I, I, I want to rely on the staff. Yes, we are smart, capable people with access to the intervention. But that doesn't necessarily translate into expertise in different areas. That's my humble opinion. And so I found myself feeling like, hey, you know, could this be better? Where I'm not being, you know, called on to provide expertise. You know, I'm remembering also sort of there was a garbage, what was it called? A bulk disposal bin that is neither a construction site and there was some discussion of can we frequently remove that? And how much weed, you know, I remember all of us were trying to figure out size, the weed, the frequency, which entrances, you know, and it felt a little, again, sort of in the realm of a certain level of expertise that I was struggling with at that, at times. So maybe the response to that is to say, hey, that's why you're on the council. We've got to figure this out. But I think at times it feels we need more expertise coming, you know, kind of vetting aspects of this. The one good news that if I may say one last thing that I really which give us both the pro and the con argument as part of legal advice, I think that's an improvement for the variance process. That's him bringing in expertise, saying, look, I can lay out arguments on both sides here. You have how I would set it up to give us a framework coming in. I really appreciate that. I think we need similar types of expert intervention prior to it coming to us. So we are, we are kind of making a judgment call based on testimony, based on historic facts, based on knowledge of the town rather than an expert call. You know, my thoughts.
I thought we were going to get, we're going to hire somebody that was going to begin to, you know, advise us on, on these kinds of things because, you know, like Kabeer, I too am uncomfortable with some of the things I'm being asked to look at. I'm not an engineer. I'm not an architect. You know, and my knowledge is, is, is limited that way. And, and I feel, you know, the pure example, it's like, well, we have a code, just follow the code. Then, you know, if we have an extenuating circumstance like a, somebody who's handicapped and needs a certain kind of ramp or a porch, whatever, well, well, that, that makes sense to me. But I don't understand why we're always granting variances quite frankly. So I would appreciate a, a, somebody who can do this, can tell us why we're doing it, you know, why we should do it or shouldn't do it, or someone who really can work within the code. That's, that's, that's educated to do that because I'm not.
I mean, Rob could do some of that. The, one of the things, I'm always learning new things from the code every time I look at it. We have grandfathered in our code extensions to the rear of the property that's in our code. Regardless of the status of the home at the time or the construction, the rear construction. In other words, what I've been saying was that some of the homes are non-conforming for current code. But it doesn't matter. It can still extend to the rear and we're not going to be concerned about it. But we don't do that to the front or to the side. We only do it to the rear. And so one of the things that bothers me is exactly that, that we have a whole lot of non-conforming houses in town. And when they come up or extensions that are not in the rear, that are in the front of the sites, then they have to go through this variance process because the house is non-conforming, not because they're adding something to the footprint of the house. And they don't have to do it when they're adding in the rear. Or bigger.
Well, they are adding to the footprint of the house. I mean, that's why.
Well, no, I mean, they, they can be literally putting a second story on. But because it's non-conforming and they have to come in, it's, it's variance.
Well, then you're meaning, if I may, I mean, two points. One is there's this front and back discrepancy. I can understand why that might be. The second point you're making is that there is previous non-conformers. So when there's construction, now that is implicated in our decision making.
And the reason why they're not informing is because we changed our code after those people were built.
Exactly. And I suppose that's just a part of the process, right? If they are, I, I went to that, for instance, because, you know, the garage that we built on was non-conforming by a few inches. But we kind of complied with, we had to seek a variance and we got, it was two inches, so we got it. It was prior to this council. So, you know, but I, it's, I don't know if there's an answer to that, but I think that's, that's a more structure. My request would be we learn on these spaces in a more systematic way. We can collectively commit the learning before, frankly, we make more changes. That would be my strong request because we will be better at the changes, whichever direction. If we can just take the time and learn and absorb what they're saying. For instance, as you know, I've said that we've had actually, by the, on the other side of this, applications that have gone through without any debate or discussion. What is the lesson from? Lesson from that is when they are conforming, we are a rubber stamp. When they're logic, you know, and so I'm wondering, can we help the town residents and say, hey, if you're conforming, you know, you don't need a council hearing or it's on, you know, as I've proposed previously, it's on the consent agenda, you know, like we, that's a lesson. There've been at least four cases, I think, or five cases where we have barely had a discussion. You know, so, so.
Well, it's only a rubber stamp because somewhere along the process, something's been identified that's not correct and the, and the staff is.
Exactly. It has been technically dealt with and we have looked at the applications.
But that's different than variance.
That's, yeah.
Point, I mean, that's, these people are coming in with following the code as it stands. And so therefore then their building permits are pretty easily achieved. So, I mean, on a first meeting, like, you know, on the prior meeting, I mean, maybe it's like more of an informal meeting with like Matt and, and you talk about like the stormwater management code, what it means to get a variance and, you know, trying to live within the code. And then they can go and take it to Montgomery County and make their decisions of what they want to do and then come back if they need.
Well, that's the exact rationale of the, of a welcoming document, which, which, which I, I think this council might want to reconsider because, because, you know, the, for example, I don't want to use any, okay, so there's, there are cases where information is provided to an applicant at the last minute when they should have gotten it before they even undertook the design of the project.
Yeah. And so like, if we have kind of something set up, like our expectation in building is that you follow our town code. That here's what it is, you know, and then if they're the ones that choose to need variances, then they come back after that process and then we can see, you know, if their variances will be approved. But like, I agree, it's kind of, it's disjointed to do it before and then they go back and then they come back and we're like, oh, we've already talked about this.
It's not, it's not fair to the applicant. Because we do have a duty to the public.
Yeah.
Great discussion. And, and I think Kabeer may have some point that we have, we are now dealing with the impact of some fairly recent code changes. And we have some more code changes that are
Just been implemented.
In the works. Or in process that will have further impacts.
And we're not done yet.
And we're not, right, so. I, I agree with you there. It does not make sense to try and make further course corrections now because we don't really have enough feedback to guide those corrections. But I think it's a good idea for us to keep tabs on what's happening. And if we observe issues or opportunities to improve the process, we should, you know, find and keep track and then at appropriate time.
And I'm open to volunteering with someone's help to just have a reading. This is some of all applicants that have gone through this to very have clear data on what we have learned because I think we all operate from our memory and what we took away from that, from that. Yeah, but it might be good to just have a way and say, this case, this is what happened. Case, we go the number of times they went back. And to collect the information.
It would be a spreadsheet that we can just access before we show up at a meeting if we want to.
Oh, I didn't even think about that. That's a good idea to have that historic experience.
Yeah, forty eight oh three fallstone, they, they came back, they did, we gave them whatever, you know, and so on.
Yeah, I'm happy to do a first quick cut based on agenda, start right there. But maybe we can build on it.
Thank you very much. Okay. Great discussion and we're almost done. I, streetlight update, Matt.
Yeah, so the summer, council member Barr and I went over, we had a couple of meetings with some representatives from Pepco. Try to explain to them what, what we wanted, which really is not that complicated. That we, we were trying to explain to them, we don't necessarily want custom-made lights. We just want their standard LED lights to replace our existing, the existing lights that we have on, on the poles and on the structures. Now, even within the standard selection of Pepco lights, there are certain variables that are available. So you can, you can change what the wattage is and this is, this is in theory, one of the benefits of LED lights is because they are, they are more variable. You can change how bright, how bright they are, what the, what the color, you know, if it's bluer or orange or yellow or the distribution of the light, things like that. Pepco did give us a, a table that broke down basically what, at least in terms of wattage, in terms of how bright the lights are, what we would want to replace our existing light structures because each month we get a bill from Pepco that goes over, you have this many of this kind of light with this much wattage. They have a table that says if it's a high pressure sodium light, that's a hundred twenty watts. You want a sixty watt LED light first. So we, based on those, we, we had a selection of four different lights. Two for the straightaway portions of the street, two for intersection parts of the street because I think with the, the understanding correctly, if I'm wrong, Robin, is that at an intersection, you want it to be a little bit brighter. Pepco at that time said, okay, well, we, you know, it'll take, it'll take you basically eight weeks for every order you do. So when you put in the order for the demo, it'll take us eight weeks to process it, get the lights installed, et cetera. And you make a selection, we can do about a third of the town at a time. So it'll be another eight weeks. We can do a third of the town. You know, you put in a new order immediately, eight weeks later, we'll do the second, third, and so, and so. So Pepco sent over an application for the demo lights. It was, I could share the application with you. It, it seemed more complicated than what we had discussed with them. And not necessarily even applicable all the time because there were questions about the voltage of what you're hooking up. It was almost. The voltage of what you're hooking up, it was almost, it was the same sort of application as if you were putting in a new HVAC system. So I I filled it out to the best of my ability. It got rejected. Um, they said that they needed more, sorry, go, yeah.
You know, this is deeply frustrating, because it's effectively, we have money. We have approval to spend, we wanted to replace all lights in the park. Why are we applying? I don't understand why do we need to apply? We're like, hey, guys, we want to buy this service, it's going to be a catalog, please come and install these lights, here's the cash. Why is this so kind of reversed, where they are deciding what we want, what how we spend and what we're going to do?
Yeah, yeah, well, that's part of the the. Uh aggravating part to me too, is that application really was. From their perspective, they need the information of the lights that that they that we want, so I I thought we were giving them the information they needed just for the lights.
Us paying them.
And they said, we don't. We don't want, we we need more information from you, basically.
Don't they have like a consultant or like someone that, like a salesperson?
I think frankly, they are happy to drag their feet, because they want to wait until the new public service agreement goes through, but.
Is this a technical problem or political? Remember when we started this? Originally, we said this is a technical problem, we need to figure out what we want, it's the, once we land on what's in the catalog, we are done. Now it appears to be a political problem. Where technically, we know exactly what we want, but they are a bunch of jokers and we need to figure out.
Well, we've chosen the deliberately easiest route to get LED lights. Um, which is that we simply um request the bulbs from Pepco that they have in stock. And the only service is then installing the bulbs in our existing lab.
So we made it very easy for that.
It is as easy as it can be.
So then why, why is it not easy?
They are, they are so incompetent that when I was on the phone with them. They didn't understand that intersections of brighter lights than regular streetlights, even though that is standard in the industry. They're Pepco, they should know that.
Well, we are, we are a town, we are, we may be a small town, we are.
Okay, so I think that you're all asking excellent questions, and I think that what we need to do is invite our. Pepco government.
I agree.
Person to the January work, is this December, to the December work session. So you can all properly cross-examine.
I think we should do that, I agree.
I don't want us to get hostile with them, that's the problem.
Well, that's not getting.
We don't have to be.
Asking questions.
Yeah.
But anyway, who, I forget who replaced him.
His name is, uh, Alberto Zegada.
Oh, yeah, and by the way, he will most likely be at the MML. Everything, he'll, he'll definitely be at the legislative, the committee for Montgomery. But I think that we need to, I think we need to, I think we need to invite him, because you all are the ones that are. Making the decision on spending the money, and you need to get answers from them.
I agree, and Matt, my advice would be to have everything in again before that meeting. So he kind of say, oh, you guys haven't done anything.
Well, yeah, well, and and part and to your point about, you know, we're, we're, we're willing to pay. You know, almost a quarter of a million dollars to Pepco to to do this. Um, uh, what I've tried to do is go through the back channel and go directly to the provider of the lights. Because Pepco is paying them to make, so they have a real incentive.
For Pepco.
For for Pepco to get this work done, and I I I think I'm making a little bit of headway there.
No, I think that you all, I, I mean, you, you five are the ones that are going to have to vote on the expenditure. Once it comes in, so, so you need, and this is that person's job, is to answer your questions. The 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 liaison.
And don't we all collectively believe that it doesn't have to be a third, or third, or third, what the hell is that? Why can't we do it all at once? I find that kind of ridiculous.
Invincibly on the phone that they could only do a third at a time.
Why? That's more expensive.
Well, that's the, that's the question you want to ask.
It's more expensive, go out, come back, go out.
Say, maybe we won't like some of the lights, we we want to tweak the next third or something, would that make sense? I I don't know.
I think at this point, I believe we are largely sorted out on the technical side of this. Okay.
Okay.
So, yeah.
So hopefully, the, hopefully, the liaison, and and hopefully. Uh, he will bring the, you know, because Pepco is a, is a big company. And hopefully he will bring the technical people that can answer all your big questions.
And I know that, um, the Public Safety Committee, you know, does want to be involved in the process. Um, so maybe we could invite Kumar as well to join.
Well, they, I mean, it's, it's, I think, I think it's important that uh these reps come at a public meeting.
Yeah.
Yes.
So, and so is the traffic. Anybody. But remember ultimately, when there is a proposal on the table, it goes through a process that. People can comment on and. So, but but you council members need information before you can even put forward an idea, a proposal.
I'm hoping that just the idea of coming out of. Sort of things.
I I.
I hope that's the case.
I mean, our funds are only good for.
Well, actually, we actually, so actually, we've never invited the government affairs person. To a public meeting, all the meetings have been, you know, individual. And so I think, I think, and I I'm sure they'll be willing to come. I mean, that's. So.
They were very insistent when they wanted to install charging station.
But but I think all.
It's once of a that time, if I remember that correctly.
I think all of you have very valid questions that need to be answered before anything can can move forward. I think one of the biggest questions is going to be, I'm just in effect, our rates. Should reduce our rates?
Uh, yeah, definitely. For LEDs in. In the, in this tariff, and it's much lower.
It's not a major rate.
It it actually is pretty significant in the, because in the, we actually could figure that out in in the tariff. Uh, based, based on the existing tariff. Yeah, I could, I could look into that.
So I know that there's a lot of like town lights out, there's a couple on Little Cumberland and stuff, are they being responsive to fixing those?
They always say that it takes up to two weeks to respond to it, um.
They do fix them.
They, they, they do get to them.
They do get to them, but there are a couple that are perennially a recurring problem. For sure. Yeah, and they give you a.
Great, thank you. Uh, Matt, can you continue to talk, moving on to the next agenda item, the code enforcement of the Public Safety Office?
Yeah, so, uh, we talked about this, I think, maybe last month, um, and I followed up and sent. Uh, drafts of the listing to the Public Safety Committee, and they they provided some, some good feedback about. Some changes that could be made to the listing now, and then some things we can think about. Um, in budgeting in the future and, uh, how we might. Uh. Up update our staffing to maybe better reflect what what we're, what what are, oh, excuse me, what our goals are. Um, right now, um, fortunately, we do have. Uh, Wayne Fowler, who's able to put in not as regular hours as he used to, but a few hours every week. So he's coming through town maybe two or three times a week. Um, he's mostly able to focus on existing permits, uh, existing sites. Um, and then Doug also goes through on the mornings, but getting a regular person in. Uh, which we've talked about is, I actually just met with the Budget Committee this past week. And we were, we were looking through the budget and can bring in somebody to do regular hours. Uh, to, that does not affect the bottom line of the budget, based on what we've budgeted for code enforcement. What we've budgeted for, um, other supplemental project management and, um. Possibly, uh, police as well. Um, to better respond to some of the other public safety and code enforcement issues that. Were, we see more often, noise, um, parking, uh. Issuing fines for for, um, code violations. Uh, and then also doing regular checks for potholes and. Broken sidewalk areas, um, signage issues, streetlights. Um, so I I posted the. Uh, I have begun posting it onto the e-procurement website for Maryland, and the listing should be up on the. NML website, uh, this week. I, the draft that I have has, um. Has, uh, scheduled us to begin interviewing people in January. To give them time over the holidays to put something together and then bring on somebody hopefully in February. And then the, the only other thing I would quickly add with, uh, from a public safety perspective is that. Um, Chair Baswani and, um. Steve Friedman on the Public Safety Committee had a little bit of experience and sent me over information about. A security firm that is ran, run by a former Montgomery County Police Officer. So, um, I have their contact information, wanted to just inquire about what kind of work they they've done for municipalities or. Um, uh, I I don't, I don't know if they've specifically worked with municipalities or homeowners association. I I don't have a great sense of what their experience is, but, um, just to pick.
Well, I think, I, as I recall, the council asked at the last work session. Did you research all the options and present them here? So, for example, Kenwood has a, uh, they, I think. The community of Kenwood uses a private security company.
Right.
And so I think it would be nice if you followed up and just presented some options for future. And that's something that that you all might want to consider when you, uh, do the budget for next year.
This sounds great, because it doesn't impact the current budget, so I'm absolutely.
Speaking of, but it's the Public Safety Committee really asked, recommend that we have a code enforcement officer of separate full-time. Public Safety Officer and a part-time night-time Public Safety Officer.
That was one of the recommendations that they had had.
That was at the time of budgeting, right?
Yes.
That was their original request, we didn't, we didn't follow that, hundred percent.
Um, okay, so I I'll, I'll follow up and pick the brains of this firm and maybe look into some of the other communities around us and see. I do think one of the challenges with our current setup, on the one hand, it's, it's great to have. Montgomery County, active Montgomery County Police Officers that are acting as a liaison to the town. One of the challenges is always that typically, the the police officers live up county. And so it's harder to convince them to put in a lot of hours way down here after their shift has ended. Um, so it's maybe worthwhile to look at some of these other options to see.
Well, I think you can do, well, I think that, that once you get the information on the private companies. You can do a spreadsheet with the pros and the cons, because, because, um, at the time that. Uh, the town hired, uh, Montgomery County Officers, it was also a consideration to hire Chim and Chase Village Officers. So we could, we could look at, you know, that option too.
Okay.
But I mean, there is a significant amount budgeted for this year that hasn't been spent, right?
Yeah, yeah, we, we're, we are significantly under budget.
So, so we're not bound to the, the, uh, Montgomery County Officers. So if the council likes one of these, uh, security companies, we could, um, you know, you could. Um, approve a contract this year, and certainly even on a trial basis and see how it works out. And you might want to get information from, uh, Kentwood, the Citizens Association, and I don't. Does anybody know if any of the other communities around here use private, uh. Security companies?
I don't know.
But there certainly, there must be some in the county.
I have, not to get ahead, but two things to pack for you, but we have a procurement process. I think DEI considerations and hiring should be part of the process. I don't know how it's baked into our process right now, I don't remember that, and second, the interview process. If it's, as an assumption, it's an individual, it may not be, they may go with a bar and so on, but if it's an individual, then the interview process. Who, who you want, like Marv Aslani, and you know, then the, who are the individual, we, you may want to define that up.
Okay.
Good idea.
And are we getting, um, like, I guess I haven't seen one of those updates from. The officers that we have now. Do we still get in like their?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're checking in their, um. They check, they, they plug in their hours each paycheck, so we, we have the exact hours that they're.
And are they logging like what they're doing?
Um. I know that we had a.
That reminds me, Shannon, what would be nice to invite them to a public meeting? I don't know if that's.
I mean, he's banned, Sergeant Chung has been to, uh, well, we've had, he's definitely been on a public safety meeting, I don't know if you were on that call. I super, you know.
Be nice to just do a, like a quarterly invitation.
Well, there seems to be a lot of questions about what they can and can't do, and, you know, we learned that they can't do several things. Um, you know, as far as like the tracking, you know, we were going to keep a log of what they are doing. Um, so that we can, you know, that was kind of designed to help the Public Safety Committee. Come up with some good recommendations on what they should be doing, you know, and, uh, we're kind of in this learning mode still. And then, you know, things come up and it's just, it would, it would be good to kind of like. Get kind of like an overarching philosophy on it, because like, you know, we've got that guy who was roaming the streets of. You know, that we learn about on the listserv, on our private listserv, and actually through your email. Um, and he caused like quite some damage, like, um, and scared people on the other side of Cumberland, like Montgomery County. You know, public schools, their, their head of security was here that day, and like, we don't really know any outcome from that. Like why he came to town, like it's.
Well, those are questions for the, um, Montgomery County Police.
Yeah.
Not, not, not necessarily for our, but, but we, but that, uh. We do, and this also goes to what, uh, Councilmember, uh, Kumar is saying that. We, we do, we've been hoping to have a meeting with our Second District Police Commander, there's a new one. So, so that would be the opportunity to ask all these good questions.
Our request would be if we can somehow establish a regular cadence of these check-ins. With him as well as with.
Well, it's a her now, yeah, but yeah, but those, those are the kind of questions you want to ask, because I think that, I, I think, uh. Does anyone remember the last time we had a public meeting with the commander?
It was earlier this year, Shannon.
No, 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 they, they had a meeting with, uh, you had a meeting.
She's strong.
You, but you didn't have it with a commander, I don't think, I think we had, I didn't we have the commander on a Zoom? But we haven't had.
When it was Gagan.
When it was Gagan, but there's a new, there's a new Second District Commander, it's a woman.
It's a Dana?
No, no, she's the public, uh.
What do you say? Could we do, uh, once a year, the Second District Commander.
Yes.
And then maybe a quarterly basis, the cops that are in town.
Yeah.
Come and visit with us.
If we still, if we still employ.
If we still employ them, hopefully we do, and if there's a way to, to, you know, um. I think a lot of the questions Shannon is asking, you know, instead of coming through you, Matt, let them just come here and.
Yeah, well, that's been the, you know, that has always been the intention, but that changed with COVID. But we need to get right, we need to get right back.
One, one of the things I learned in this process is that when they're in their police car, see them sitting there and wonder why. Why, why are they sitting there? Why aren't they going? Yeah, because they can't, they're actually by. Their contract, they can't move in their police car. Um, we were getting the bikes, and it turns out that. Those bikes are town-owned and not county-owned, then they can move on their bikes. And move around on a bike, but they can't in their car, and so there are strange rules that restrict the police, this is not going to be true of security.
Right.
Well, well, the also the landscape of challenges is pretty wide, right? I mean, they are at entrances. Cause there have been instances where people have either committed a hard path, but they have done something and they're escaping or getting out. That's a great place to be, but then they're probably not in a position to intervene if there's an individual who's. Was a rock, someone's, you know. So there's a pretty wide landscape of things.
Okay, so.
Sit in their cars and let's say they see something, let's say. Somebody's kind of broken to a house and is running out. See him how to get out of the car and.
Good question to ask.
Yes.
I suspect, yes.
There, there.
Because it's like seeing a crime, right? So people act on it.
So, so remember, we first hired uh police. Almost twenty years ago, and we didn't do. This kind of thorough analysis of the options at the time. We just hired, we just hired them. And and I, and I think one of the great things that the Public Safety Committee is. They've really done some intensive analysis of all this, and we have to be willing to keep an open mind that. Just because we've always done it that way, that's the best solution, and I think we really need to keep, because I think the Public Safety Committee basically. It it feels that the uh that a private security uh service would be more effective. Isn't, isn't that really where they're coming from, but.
I don't know if I'd say that, but I think that what they determine more is that what we're doing now, is it necessarily a super.
Right, is it, it isn't effective, so, so these are all good things, and I think that we definitely need to meet with the commander, and we definitely need to. Have Matt explore all these other options.
And like maybe the commander would have recommendations on what we should be doing.
Exactly. Yeah, a good question.
And all, 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 I just, always remember, we actually live in a very low crime area. Um so the whoever it is, security police don't have much to do when they're in town. Do we know the largest?
Well, let's.
Does anyone know? That's from cars.
Yeah.
Check, check fraud.
And check fraud, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they're not going to catch.
We just got a mailing that was like, keep your stuff locked up, it's our.
Yeah, if you, Public Safety Committee may want to set out something. I don't know if it falls under the purview of public safety, but we do see an extraordinary amount of tech for it, if you look at the data.
Yeah. Yeah, we have that stolen.
Yeah.
Put in the mailbox.
Well, some people might say. We are a low crime area because Chevy Chase Village Police are running around all the time, there is a police presence in Somerset. Even if it's not as much as people would like, it it's it's a known presence that is.
Yeah, especially if it is at points of entrance and exits.
So, that's right, so, but these are the kind of questions you need to ask.
Thanks for that update and um. Yeah, I think you're actually right, Mr. Mayor, that um. Our Public Safety Committee was doing a great job, asking some questions, trying to dig into it.
Totally.
Um can you give us some data on fire coverage?
So this item actually is really at the request of Councilor Roback. Um but what I, because she's gonna bring uh some issues from the uh Public Safety Committee on fire. The 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 only two things I want to say is, first of all, finally, the Bethesda Fire Department has approved and adopted new bylaws. And uh basically now, uh the town no longer has a governing relationship with uh Bethesda Fire Department. So, so um. As you might recall, the, under, under the old bylaws, we had the right. As a community our size to send, to to approve and send. A delegate to their board of directors. It's totally been changed, so we don't have a governing relationship with them anymore. And the uh the committee under the chair has requested that we have the town attorney confirm that. The next, uh the the other piece of information I wanted to bring, which I think you already know, is that um Chief Bailey, Deputy Chief Bailey. Is um planning to have a community information session for our town, and if we would like. You could invite Drummond and Chevy Chase West, whoever you would like, so that he can um. Promote what the fire, what the Montgomery County Fire Department's role is, and also how the other. Uh auxiliary departments, uh Bethesda. Fire Department, Bethesda Chevy Chase Rescue Squad, and the Glen Echo um Fire Department, how they supplement. Uh and augment the service that's provided by the county. And with that, I will turn it over to you.
No, I I just, I I didn't hear like full um. Understanding that, so Barbara Condos is not representative anymore?
Well, I I've asked for clarification because they they've, they've updated their bylaws and they say that their board is made up and. Well, the one thing that their board is made up is. Three representatives of civic organizations in the Bethesda Response Area. A civic organization is a body of citizens with bylaws, regularly scheduled meetings and.
Right, but, and but Matt, Matt, we're not, Matt, we are, we are, we no longer have a government relationship with them. They happen to have on their board someone who lives in our town. But we don't have a governing relationship.
But so Barbara was.
And 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 we have to have the town attorney affirm that. But Barbara is a member of their board and lives in Somerset, but but she, she, it's not under the authority of the town.
So how did she become a member that, how does, how does someone become a member of their?
They, they have their own, they have their own procedures under their bylaws, they're, they're not, they're. They're an independent nonprofit organization, they have no relationship with. When, when it was created, when the Bethesda Fire Department was created over a hundred years ago. The, the town had the authority to send a member. To, to the board of directors, that doesn't, that, they changed that.
Well, Nat Finkelstein compared with the president of the board.
I believe so.
We have two residents.
I believe so.
Well, the the bigger point here is that there's potential for this event. If I missed it, Jeffrey, uh. Archie, is that right?
Yeah, if Archie is gonna come and.
And invite this. Team as well, the Bethesda Fire Department, I think that's a good thing, because I think this is about ambulance and fire, right?
Right, right.
I think in town there's anxiety, I think we actually have great. And I think it'd be good to sort of let the town know that there's good coverage. And you do ambulances, will show up, there are multiple redundancies. That's what we heard from that update that you guys organized over the other year, so. It'd be good to keep reminding everyone, don't feel anxious. There's good coverage.
And and there, there are other services that the department provides, the chief Bailey wants to. Uh make sure people know that, for example, fire, uh fire safety. You know, you can invite the fire department to your house to do a survey.
I think it's great, right?
And there's a lot of other services like that, because you know, there, it just like, Councilmember, I was saying, there's not a lot of crime. Around here, we also have very few fires. As you might notice.
Yeah, but I mean, his point is that, is that, um yeah, you can have them come in to your house and do a whole breakdown of like, you know. What you might need to watch out for, which is super helpful, I think. Um, okay, all right, so is, is, is um. Is our town lawyer then clarifying?
Well, he. He basically.
Is he here?
He's not here, he, I I did send it to him, um he said to me that. It wasn't clear, he, he thought that it was. Intended by their bylaws to include municipalities, but basically that they would have to. They would have to clarify, so I I have sent an email to Nat Finkelstein um. To ask.
I don't, I don't know why we need to bother anybody, it's, it, it clearly, if you read the old bylaws and the new bylaws. We have, we have no right to send anybody to the board. They, they're an independent nonprofit, they can pick whoever they want.
Wait, we can nominate up to two people though.
No, we can't nominate, we have. Any member of the public can nominate whoever they want, but we don't, we don't have, we don't. The language.
I, I don't know if that's true though, because they might, they might have intended when they said civic organizations to include.
It, it says, it says right here.
Well, there's no harm in clarifying, but just to be clear, I appreciate your point.
The committee, the, the committee has asked it, that the, the town attorney clarified.
Okay.
But if you can, you just read it, we don't have the right to send somebody to, to be a member of the.
Do we have the right to know like the volunteer staffing hours and um?
That's something we should ask Chief Bailey.
Okay, so, cause like, that's really the question, it's like, you know. Montgomery, Chief Bailey operates outside of Bethesda Fire Department, like he staffs the, the Bethesda Fire Department for. All of the times that um you know, they have the ambulance going and um the fire people, and then. Bethesda Fire Department supplements it with volunteers, um and. From what, you know, we've heard over the years that there has been an issue trying to have volunteers stay. And to, you know, it takes a long time to train them appropriately, and so um there, there's a different issue with that. But Montgomery County and Chief Bailey control, you know, that if you were to dial nine one one right now, you probably have. One of their fire department people, not a Bethesda Fire Department volunteer that comes to the house, and so um. You know, part of, part of what we were talking about when we were like initially, you know, initially talking about this is that the ambulance, for example, then. Doesn't really run that often out of there because the staffing hours that Montgomery County staffs it. They don't deem that it needs to be staffed twenty-four seven at this point, and that could change.
But then, just to clarify, that doesn't mean an ambulance won't show up in Somerset.
No, no, it means.
That's the part, that's I think, part of what people are hearing in town is, are you telling me I don't have ambulance coverage?
No.
But, so I think we need to be, you know, there's great ambulance coverage in town, there are redundancies.
Yeah.
So it, then the question is, do we really need to get into what is happening? Does the fire department, the volunteers, as long as on the outcome side, which is what we care about, is there a fire? Do people show up when there's a problem? Doesn't seem to be.
Okay, but don't forget that we get ambulance some coverage from the Bethesda Fire Department, B C C and.
Exactly.
Len Echo, so all these questions that you're asking, which are very important, need to also be asked at all three of those stations.
Agreed, and maybe this event, all three could be there.
Well, that, that'll be up to.
Yeah, well, again, do the same thing, invite all three.
Yes, yeah.
Once or twice a year and just make sure we have a regular access with them. That way, we don't need people on the board.
Well, I think that maybe it would be good if the um. The committee working with.
You're much as. Much the alternate.
You're the liaison, who's the backup?
It's not me.
I think it's you. Anyway, so why don't, why don't you, I, I mean, because I talked to the chief and he's the one who proposed this idea. So, so, and so here we are at this work session, how would you like? To move forward?
Let's do it.
Do you, but I mean, who wants to take, I think the committee should be involved.
Yeah.
And I think you.
Yeah.
Councilor Roback and then Councilmember. You're also volunteering too.
Yeah, I mean.
And then, and then also, it should be decided when is the best time to do this, because. Probably not December, right, do you want to do January, but whatever you all decide. But I, but I'll give you, you have Chief Bailey's um content, so why don't you just um.
Yeah.
Content directly.
Getting a beer.
But to um, having looked through Kumar's letter, which. Has at times flames come off it, um. One of the things this changes is that Barbara Condos is not a town representative to the B F D board. Therefore, she does not report to the town on B F D.
But she could if she wanted to.
That is the point Jeff.
No, I mean, she could if she wanted to, but we, we don't have a relationship with that, just like we don't have a relationship with. To the governance of Glen Echo or or B C C, and we have people in, you know, uh. Two committee members uh are involved with the um. B C C Rescue Squad. And there are probably some people in town that are involved with Glen Echo for all I know. Which is good.
Well, I think man's gonna clarify that, but the broader, that is seems like a smaller, if I may say, a smaller issue. Was it the broader thing of do we have access to these guys, can we track for them, do we have proper coverage? Right, like, I think that seems the, the part with that.
Well, they, they, remember, all of that is the responsibility of the Montgomery County Fire Department. Not, not these, they're, they're, all, all they do is supplement with volunteers and other staff.
There are real questions to ask on, um, there's staffing equipment retention, because the police in the county are having real problems. It wouldn't surprise me if the fire service also. We should know that.
My advice would be, we should focus on outcomes. As in. When there's an ambulance needed, they'll show up, when there's a fire truck needed, they'll show up. How they achieve those outcomes? Perhaps it's out of the property. Would be my two cents. Um maybe we can ask whatever question we want.
Excellent.
Yep. And I, I think it'd be. Great to get the data, and I'm sure the data exists on response time for ambulances. Yeah, that's. I don't know if it's available. Somerset or whether it's available, you know, the district or whatever, but. Still be some interesting information.
Yeah, I I can see where I can try and dig that up.
Thank you. And and thank you for all the engagement with the Public Safety Committee, that's um. We've been standing on, and it's been a lot of work. Um the next item is, ah, strange, frozen, stormwater management now. Can you give us an update on? The R F P, I know the committee was, was asking how that was going.
Yep, and so I, I have a draft that's um ready to go, um. I, the, I included the um. The uh R F P in the. It uh in the drive for you, so um. If, if anybody has any specific feedback on it, if there's some kind of questions that aren't included there, happy to. Happy to update it based on, on that, but in essence. It's uh. It is hiring a contractor or firm to. Expand the work that L I D C did, and so the Stormwater Study Committee had. Identified one, one of those little micro watersheds. Between. Dorset and Essex and Warwick and Surrey in that little area, so I think it's about. What, maybe ten houses or so in that area? Um and to design a shared, what was that, sorry?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, okay. Uh. To design a, a shared stormwater. Infrastructure plan on those private properties and if, if applicable, possibly on, on. Uh in the public rate of way as well, um. So this would be the next step to design a specific plan for that area, and then based on that, we would then. Uh ostensibly. Go out to bid if the council wanted, wanted to move forward with it on. Hiring somebody to actually implement it and, and, and put it in place, this, it also included. I think two meetings with all of those neighbors to try to get kind of collective buy-in on the process, so this is. Based on the. Um, the recommendation that the committee had submitted at the last work session, and so.
Was the, the R F P developed a plan and not good work?
Correct. Next step.
Um, I had one question on the scope of work, number two, I don't know why it's in there. Uh stormwater infrastructure condition survey, because the, this R P is about those thirteen properties. This interview got all the town number two there, do you, tell me why number two was in there?
Well. Uh, yeah, I guess. The, the, the purpose of that, and maybe I should clarify, the idea was on those properties, if there's existing stormwater infrastructure. That it might, that it would be useful to know about that when creating an entire plan, but I, I see your point that it says all town. Right.
On the properties.
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I had the same reaction. That number two would be hard to achieve. In this code, but if it's only for that watershed.
Yeah.
Or that, the mini watershed, then it makes sense. Same here.
Thank you for prioritizing that. Thank you for prioritizing that. Yes, there are no other.
Accursed to me that even the stakeholder coordination aspect of this. If if you would need the right kind of firm.
Yeah.
To do that.
Yeah.
Not a technical firm that is happy doing surveys and conjuring reports.
Right.
They will need to interface with residents, interface.
Yeah.
And coordinate, so that applies, I think, a different skill set, just keep that in mind as you.
Yeah, and I think getting that buy in is would is crucial to.
So most likely, towns start would need to be involved.
Yes, yeah, yeah. Um, yeah, the, the only other thing I would add that I talked briefly with um Julie and Ellen about was. One of the things I was looking at when we're doing our roadway master plan is have is the potential for. A G I S proposal to do planning and to map out all of the infrastructure and. Down the line, again, this is more of a budgeting question down the line because it can be quite expensive, may not prove to be worth it. But um, if it's something we look into, then building out that number two in the scope of work. Townwide might actually in the long run be something that we, we look into.
Make that part of next year's budget process.
So I wanted to ask regarding this item, is, is there a timeline? That the council or that the manager wants to discuss?
I suppose we cannot really intervene in the winter months. So the real sort of intervention is likely in spring, that reasonable assumption or?
Yeah, I, so, I mean, again, around this time of year, you know, people are in and out of the office throughout December anyway. So we would, we would probably get somebody hired and selected in February. Um and then even, even then, realistically, they're probably not going to get a good look at. What the, what the ground looks like until the snow melts and.
Is that the hope of the, of the activity? I I was just wondering.
I really don't know, I just assumed that the winter would be. On into, you know, looking at what's, what's doable.
I, I don't think, I think that they can.
I think, I think, I think the intent is that this work and the committee estimated it would be thirty five thousand dollars for, for this report. The idea is that this work would be completed this fiscal year, so then.
Oh, yeah, it should be, I was just thinking. Weatherwise, doesn't matter, but maybe it does.
I don't think so.
Okay.
I mean, there might be some sucker like frozen, you know, if the, if the ground's frozen.
Does the granite ever freeze now at global warming?
No.
Yeah, it actually does, thanks, thanks to the polar vortex phenomenon, but it's in and out, freezes for a few days and then it'll crack up again, what happens?
Well, the Environment Committee is preventing global warming in some.
All by themselves. Let's not start a ground freezing committee.
Right, uh next agenda item is the building consultant.
Sure, so, so on this one, again, we had, we had started kind of discussing what that might look like in town. I think there was general consensus on the council that we wanted to kind of move forward and talk about. What this might look like, what, what kind of process we would want. Um, I included some examples that the town of Chevy Chase had. Um, that was a report that was created for them on a, uh basically, that idea would be a character study on town to look at. What, what defines the average building in Somerset, what, what's the variation, what's the. Coverage uh on lots, what's the, the, the frontage, the height, et cetera. So that when we're looking at home changes down the line, we have some frame of reference of. The existing conditions and the existing houses um so that. We have that in mind when we're creating new restrictions or.
Or when you're considering a variance, so I think this is a tool that Councilmember Heller would find very attractive. Based on statements that she's made when decisions are being made on variances. So um, so I don't, is anybody, doesn't, isn't everybody uh in favor of pursuing something like this?
Uh, it reminds me of the L I D C data, what was that? Software called that we paid for?
The rain.
Rain, so there was a software, you saw that I had all this data on each property that they had aggregated, right?
Yeah, and I.
Where is that? And why is that not available?
Well, I think a lot of it is available through public.
No, I mean, to, to us potentially as a tool. That we were, we, we had this date, we were going to use it. It was part two or part three of that contract, right? They, one was a report, but there was also this L I D. Rain plan data set.
Yes.
Am I, am I making that up or uh, well, no, they, they. Uh, there is a rain plant data set, so they can show you the conditions of your property for any property in town. And that's drawn on a data set, yes, well. That would be pretty helpful as a tool if that truly does exist. Just to highlight, you know, internal measure. Yeah, I'm not sure it has the characteristics of your house, so that. It would be nice to see it though.
I, I think it would also be um helpful to the council if. Uh we could ask a council member from Chevy Chase to explain the benefits of having this stuff. Because remember all the drama they had over there, what was it, Robin, like? Ten years ago, when they had building moratorium and then they, and this was one of the, and I, and I think Ron was their attorney there, right? Or anyway, so I, I think it'd be good if you heard, if you got sort of a, a reference on why this. Before you spend the money on this, get a reference on why it's so going to be so valuable. And how helpful it's been to them.
They, they were primarily using the tools. Supervisor building. Let's do that, maybe we have a, on a working session. Invite them and we also, we look at that, I can see data, so maybe it's not useful, but maybe, just want to remind everyone. If you didn't pay.
No, I'm not sure who's still around, I, I don't know if the mayor, I don't know if he was on the council then.
It was actually, the interesting thing in, in Chevy Chase too was that they based, the, the council at the time. Basically, um. Uh delegated the work to a land use committee. So I don't, I don't know who was serving on the land use committee at the time, but I'm sure the mayor oversaw it or, you know, was.
I don't, I don't think he was the mayor then, but somebody, there's still got to be people over there that can help and give, give some uh.
Um, okay, so should I? Uh, so number, number one, I'll look for uh existing data that we have.
That we paid for.
Um.
That I thought we paid for.
Mm hmm. And then um invite someone from the town uh to.
Well, someone who can speak to the specific idea that has been implemented in another town.
You know, the manager might be able, he's been in a long time, he hasn't topped it in a while.
Yeah.
He might be able to help you or or talk to us about it.
Okay, um, so.
And Ron, and Ron, of course.
Should um. Is there any specific research that you want me to bring back to the next meeting? Or just plan to have them be some, try to get somebody to come and answer questions from the council um? Okay. So we're not, we're not quite at the point where we are ready to start crafting an R F P for. For example.
Excuse me to define our objectives just a little bit more.
So um, I don't know if this, if we can even do this or not, but um. I do know that the village of Drummond is starting to um look into more um. Stormwater management and more like of their own building permit stuff and um. We could maybe like pool like resources and money together and like do a joint something with them. Um, that might be an idea to share some of the.
We need to annex them, I'm, I'm all in favor of both of those.
We're the big city.
You know, you know, they're, they're not, they're.
No, they're not even.
They're three quarters of the street.
Yeah.
We need to annex, we need to annex all the Chevy Chase West and Wood. I was telling, I was telling Councilmember Humar, we need to annex all these areas. And then demand zoning authority, then we'll be able to.
He, he jokes, but I think it's a serious.
They, they, they just nominated a committee for it themselves, so like um we could touch base with them and see if they're interested.
Sharing costs.
I, they don't, they don't have, they don't have very much money there to help us.
That's what I.
Remember, they're trying to, they, they would tell you better because they want us to pay for their, their divorce. I think we should, we should end, you know why, you know why we can't annex them, it's because people will not, not be able to get a swim lane at the pool.
There's, there are only thirty five houses. That's enough.
Let's annex them.
Well, I, I, I drew, this is not a statement on the next two items. But I drew the short straw on picking up someone from the airport, so I have to go. I have to go, thank you all.
We will follow up.
I will follow up.
Well, you're, well, I already talked to you about it, you're going to be.
Have a good holiday.
Yep, happy Thanksgiving. Keep you updated now.
Yeah, just, this is pretty, pretty quick, but uh I, I finished the, the job listing. It's posted on the M M L website and I've sent it to the two people that we had talked about before um to gauge their interest. And let them know that it's open and available. I also um.
Yeah, I think, I think Ron had a conflict.
I also have.
Thank you for being here.
No, no, you're fine, um, I actually happened to run into a um. A uh. I guess I'm not sure exactly what the right phrase is, but at the, at, at the farmer's market. I, or it was at the holiday market actually in downtown DC that there, there was a apiary in Montgomery County. And so I got their information and talked to them a little bit about potentially partnering with them to, to oversee and. And be expanded, use, you know, use our spot, so um we might have a, a few, few options, but the hope is this spring we'll finally get it off the ground.
So we can sell some beautiful honey in July for it. The Halar honey.
We call it Halar honey.
How did I get dragged into this?
Because.
Illeteration.
Just because I thought it would help you vote for it.
You can buy my vote, Betty, right now.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so, so, all right, so I don't know if everybody read my uh. Editorial. Last month about the. Did you all read it? No, you did not read it, anyway, so you know that for years I've gotten. Thousands of complaints about the way all of our entrances look. And, and so the, the um, starting with the worst one, which is the one, the entrance at. Little Falls is a tragedy, I mean, here we are, we have, we have one of the most beautiful municipalities on the East Coast. And, and the first thing anybody sees uh is like a big mess. Right, especially at Little Falls, you know, you have, it's now, first of all, the land that, the, the, I think the right of way there is probably. Owned by the, by the Parks Department.
Yes.
Even though it's in our town, it's still owned by the Parks Department and there are probably violations there that they don't keep it up. That we could find them. And then that, there's that sign, you know, there's that, that horrible sign, which they don't maintain. And finally, I think the last time we asked them, they said, well, you just go ahead and paint it, which they could recreate about five years ago. And then there's that box there, you see that, that metal box? Have you ever looked at it? Okay, then, okay, then our entrance on, on River Road.
Yeah.
Is sort of okay, um, the, I think the lights that, you know, you know, um. When Leslie Simmons was the chair of our history committee, I think she pointed out that the, there were some, you know, that's a mid-century. That's a mid-century entrance, right? Because half the town was built in the fifties, all where. Where you live and, yeah, and so, and so there were some, there were some lights there that uh were moved. To another part of town or maybe thrown away, I don't know, but they're not, that, you know, the, the design is not, whatever lights are there now or not. In keeping with the, the mid-century um design of that entrance, but I, that, but I don't know, that entrance. Is, does it have nice, um, it doesn't have nice flowers or anything, does it? No, then, then the front entrance, of course, which was ruined uh years ago when, when. They called that Walter's Last Erection. You, you know, the, the historic, the historic entrance was checked, were you, did you live here then?
Yeah.
You did right, so you know, so when the school, okay, so when the school was rebuilt, which was what, like twenty, twenty years ago? Twenty, twenty years ago, when the school was rebuilt, are you looking at the entrance now?
No.
Oh, you should be. So you know, when the school was rebuilt, the, the, the county or something, and by the way, when that school was rebuilt. You, you know, we never did permitting on that, which we probably had the right to do. And so we lost a lot of revenue. Because I don't, questions weren't asked, anyway, so. So Walter, I was the mayor, Walter was told, Walter was told that the, that the trucks wouldn't be able to come in. To the front entrance, you know, it used to be, you, you know, it was equal. Then Walter came to us and he said, oh, I, I've got, uh, I'm going to get this done for free. That we're going to change that French entrance and, and, you know, they, they, they dismantled those, those antique entrances. And moved it, and now it looks horrible, right? Have you ever looked at the front entrance, the way it's, it's lopsided? And did that, guess what? He was sold a bill of goods by somebody, he, he was told they couldn't turn in, and then they ended up not using that entrance. And it also cost us, he said it was going to cost nothing, it cost a fortune to, to do that. So, so what do we do now? Anyway, but that, that entrance, I.
Looks good now.
My initial, my, my, my um. The reason why I put this on the agenda is because I was just wondering if you were all interested in looking at all those entrances. And getting some new proposals, that the, the, the problem with the front entrance. On uh Wisconsin Avenue is that you have that, 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 that ugly path through the parkland. Which is ruining the parkland, it looks horrible, right?
Why don't we make a real path?
And so the idea was, one of the proposals, and, and you know, we, we have on contract our landscape designer. Don't we still have some money from her? Some people have proposed, you know, why, why do people have to walk, travel through the parkland? Why, why don't we just put some kind of fence up there so people are forced to walk on the sidewalk? And, and not allowed to come through that parkland.
Because there's no sidewalk on that side.
No, they can walk on, they can walk. There, there's no reason they have to shortcut through and trample through that parkland.
It's not safe, because they need to walk to the corner and cross by the light. I'm surprised we haven't sued.
I, I know, I know, so, so, so we could ask, if you all are agreeable, we could ask our, uh, we could tell. The designer, what are all the problems there and to come with the design to fix it, okay? And then there, and then the entrance on um. On this uncumbrant here, there's no sign there that says you're in Somerset. You know, when you drive into your, so when you're. So when your pizza. So when you get the pizza delivery and say come to Somerset and they, if they saw a sign, but I just think, I just think, you know, you're. You know, your entrances sort of tell you the story about what is the town all about, and if it looks shoddy. I'm sure it's a.
It was, yes, I agree with you entirely on Little Falls entrance, it was terrible, it really does need attention. The River Road, the River Road entrance, I just go past it, that, you know, it. They, they, the Dorset entrance has been much improved by the Grunsberg collect work and it is.
So therefore, we should.
I am not myself in favor of putting a fence up over that area, in favor of improving a path there, making it a tractor path. The point is that pedestrians use that as a shortcut to get to Metro Station from Somerset.
But the problem is, like I said, is that you. You end up like being on someone's yard and you have to then cross towards that to get on the side.
No, no, the, the, the park runs uh about fifty, sixty yards into town. So you'll see the path actually go almost up to the, the first private property before people cross over. Well, the town has line, well, there's been a proposal to crosswalk there, actually.
That doesn't make any sense, but a crosswalk there, just so people can, can save um two minutes. They should walk to the corner where there's a light and cross over, because that's what's safe.
Well, you all have the power to each side. Okay, so is it all right, if, is it all right if we uh talk to our um. The appropriate people about these entrances and you all can give your ideas, we can ask them a proposal. We, we might have to pay for a proposal for Little Falls.
Do, do we have a, didn't we used to have like a garden committee?
We don't have a committee.
You don't have a committee.
We are.
So you have to run.
I think parks and natural resources. So P and R C should be, because, because that is parkland there, right, Robin?
Well, it's all town.
No, no, but that, that entrance area with the big muddy mess where people can get raped in there, right? Yeah, and then, and then there's trash all over the place up there.
I don't know that we should give this to parks, not because they don't do wonderful things, but because it's not, it shouldn't be. That is not a, a legal path, and I think our entrance is, maybe we form a new committee. But, but I just think, those are people that are interested in the beautification of our town. I love it, I think that, I think that it would be great to get some entrances.
But don't you agree that we need to uh invest something to. That was my main point. Because especially in Little Falls, when I looked at it. And, and uh we need to get a hold of it in terms of talking to the Parks Department. To clarify stuff and they need to, we need to make sure they maintain it. You know, there, I think, they, they're supposed to maintain, you know, there's all this overgrown, have you noticed how overgrown it is?
Yeah, they only get to a one.
And let's, and, and let's find out if we could get that, that horrible box moving. You know, there's that big metal box there, it looks horrible.
Yeah, I'm not sure what.
And maybe we should have it, maybe we should have a contest to design a sign. You, what do you all think of that, have a contest?
I think we should first engage somebody and give us some advice before we have a, a contest. Let's decide what.
Oh, you know, there, there is another in this town that I forgot about, which we've talked about before, which is that alleyway from Drummond, right? And you know.
Another reason to.
You know, at some point, we, at, we, we at some point were considering, you know, that's actually called Warwick. Lane, Warwick Lane. And we were gonna uh rename it. But then we found out that since it's also owned by Drummond, they would have to. And we were gonna name it Shaw Lane. That was one of the possibilities. To name it Shaw Lane.
Yes, I think it's a great idea.
Okay, so we'll pursue that, and let's start, who is gonna take the lead on the annexation of Drummond? Could be here.
You're not here, you get, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
He's doing the data set.
The Shannon should be the Shannon. First up in your. They're your neighbors.
They're, they're my neighbors.
And we should, and we should annex Chevy Chase West.
One area where we might be able to expand is actually a Long River Road that are three homes that are.
Oh, right, we should annex those houses.
And actually, there's also an empty lot behind them, so if there will be really four lots to be named.
Yeah, let, let's ask our town attorney to draft some annexation language.
Well, that's, that's just working with the county.
No, no, I think, and, no, the county groups municipalities, annexation is up to us. What, what's the rule? Cause you know, Rockville and Gavisburg over the last decades, they, they've annexed. So they're now right next to each other. But, let's hear the town attorney, tell us, how do we annex these places?
Let me pull up my notes, Mr. Mayor, cause I don't recall the process off the top of my head, other than that. You know, Friendship Heights failed a couple of times, and I believe the county has some role.
No, the, the Friendship Heights tried to become a municipality.
Oh, okay.
It didn't annex. And then so did um Rollingwood tried to become, but the, but the county council has the priority over that. I don't think the county council has a role in annexation. I think only in incorporation.
Okay, I don't know the rules off the top of my head, Mr. Mayor, apologize, but I'm looking.
Okay, well, well, we don't need it tonight, so when, when you get it, you can read. Or next time that we start the annexation committee, cheer fight.
They wanna use the pool. I bet it would be a hard sell, because of the pool, although a lot of people.
Well, that's what, well, wait, so you remember historically, the reason why we D and X where all those Somerset apartments are. Is because there would have been that fear, but little did we know then, that they would have their own better pool. And also those residents aren't even there, they're all like, two thirds of them live in four other places. So we would have had all their income revenue and we wouldn't have given any services.
Use their two pools, not one pool, they had two pools. They had indoor pool.
Yeah, but they have their own pools, that's just like you, some residents have their own. Yeah, but most of, I don't think most of them are even registered to vote there. There is. I didn't realize it was such a small. We could re-annex, we could re-annex uh one of those Somerset buildings.
Well, let's, let's take it for a part of the time, you can.
Okay, um, okay, any other discussions?
Do you wanna, do you wanna, do, do, does anybody wanna hear a little bit about the Chevy Chase, the, the, the H meeting that I went to on Wednesday night?
For the uh Bethesda Women's Cooperative?
There's two things, one, two things at, 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 at Pat, one was easy, which is the Women's Farm Market redevelopment over there. That the mayor, uh, Barney.
Well, I already tested, that, that's already the council, that's, that's.
They, they just wanted to support it, they weren't, they, they sent, they sent a letter that, that they're, that's pretty standard.
I, I already ta, I already testified last week in favor of it, and I don't.
I would do, the other thing is, is that, you know, everybody's, you know, in a tizzy about what's going on, on um, on uh. Little Falls Parkway, you know, where the, you know, parks has cut us down, you know, it's changed the pattern, put us on a road diet. We're on a diet, by the way, and so they've cha, they've changed everything, um, they're gonna build a park. You're gonna build a linear park and when they're.
Yeah, that's just a proposal.
No, they're gonna do it, and when they're done, they're gonna talk to us about it.
You, you get misinformation over there.
Okay, okay, so we don't agree on this, but um.
No, no, they have, no, no, it's all in a trial period now.
A trial period, they are going to make that park a trial, and then they're gonna ask us how we like it. It's supposedly gonna be filled with adult toys, use your imagination on that, but um.
Okay, so what are you suggesting, what are you suggesting?
Know that this is a big deal. This road is a big deal, if you've ever driven it, like last Tuesday night, I drove it in the pouring rain, it was terrifying to come in off Bradley. To go, go to Somerset, you can't see well, somebody's gonna get killed over there, just a matter of time. It's, it's, it's confusing, and there is just, this park is unnecessary, where are people gonna park to go to the park?
And every Debbie, that is not a done deal. We've met with, we, I've met with leaders of all these groups and parks. They, this is a trial period, and then next year, they are coming, they will be having hearings on it, where you will to go.
Diet is a trial.
Yes, the road diet is a trial, and all these groups have misinformation.
Okay, then I have been misinformed, but my misinformation.
You were misinformed by the, by the coordinating committee. Yes. Because there was a meeting, there was a meeting, I wasn't able to attend, between Ken, with Ken Wood. And, and um Chevy Chase West, and they clarified that. It was with Andrew, it was not with Parks, it was with Andrew Friedson, to confirm that. That was a trial period, and to confirm that we will all get the necessary data to comment on this. Now, I personally feel that the, the, they should leave Little Falls Parkway the way it was. But the only way that's gonna happen is if we get all this data based on this trial period and then fight with them. And we need to enlist our council member to help us. And we all voted for him, and he ran on the post, and he rarely advocates for us. So that's my last word tonight.
Maybe we all.
Very disappointed, I'm very disappointed, but I'm so glad you brought it up. And we, and, and I would suggest that you write a, a uh, an article for the journal.
Well, now I have misinformation. I need to.
No, the, no, you have some, the only misinformation you have is that it's a done deal. Right, isn't that right, Robin?
Well, yeah, I mean, traffic committee has a report out on it coming in the journal those months, which we did worth reading in fact.
We, we need to organize, 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 we need to, all this information that you just imparted. We need, we need people to be informed about it, so they will rise up, but it's doctor.
The town was very divided on the idea of road diet, I will say, the traffic committee did a survey and it basically split down a little. People who supported it versus some people who didn't, that's what happened. The, the way they have done it is, is somewhat disturbing to somebody who knows a little bit about highways, I used to be at the transportation research board. And it, it did well, just for one committee, but anyway, it, it's, if you imagine it at night, a drunken driver coming south. Or, you know, towards River Road from. But you gotta swing over. Onto the other side. They're probably not gonna do it if they're drunk at night and it's raining, they're gonna plow straight through, and it's gonna be ugly. So, you know, it, it, it's just not a good design.
You know what else? There's, if somebody breaks down, there's no shoulder. There's nowhere to go if you're on the side coming out, let's say, coming down Dorset, turning right. If you're coming towards River, well, you can pull over to the grass, maybe, in, in some places, but there's no place for help.
That, that, all these stories need to be told in public and, and, and a huge public hearing. And I can tell you that I got a phone call, there's Brookdale, you all know where that is, right? So Brookdale, they have a new chair of a committee that's on top of this, and he's gonna be working, did he come to the? His name is Matt. I forget his last name, but he was supposed to go to that meeting. But there's new troops coming, you know, most of these organizations are filled with people that have been around, we're all dinosaurs. We need these newcomers like, like Shannon. To, to rise up in power. Right?
Yep, yep, yep.
Steve joined, Steve joined the ranks recently.
So then someone like me should just retire.
No, no, we have to, we have to mentor, we have to mentor, here's Bron, uh, Ron, I think Bron was to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, yeah, I found the, the rules on annexation. The town can initiate the action with the approval of twenty five percent of the registered voters. In the area to be annexed and twenty five percent of the owners. Of, well, so I'm, I'm sorry, owners of at least twenty five percent of the assessed value of property in the area to be annexed. The county does have a potential role, a referendum petition can be triggered either by. Twenty percent of the qualified voters or by the county government, so that the county government and county council can unilaterally trigger.
Well, they would dare, not necessarily would dare interfere. Okay, so Shannon, you're, I'm, I'm appointing you the chair of the annexation. That one house, all we have to do is get their approval, they'll let us be annexed, and that way they get to use the pool. So they're gonna.
And we should go for those three homes, because they probably all, well, actually, it's the owners, because they're all rented, but. What is, they do have full access if we annex them, they'll, I'm sure they'll agree to it.
Oh, yeah, we need to get those three definitely, so. So we need to find out who the owner is and, and follow what, what our, our town attorney says. And then you can put that on your reelection uh, uh, campaign material. You've got the annexation, and that's three, when the, you know what, that's three more taxpayers. That means the, the people that are living in those houses, hopefully they're, have huge salaries, right? And we'll get that money.
Yeah.
Well, and that's why the county might project.
They might, but, but we'll have to fight with them, that's why we go to all these meetings to have relationship with the county council members. Especially our own. Okay. Thank you all very much. Thank you, uh, Mr. Town Attorney, happy holiday.
I apologize for being late, I thought we were starting at seven for some reason, and the worst thing is I've been sitting here at my desk all night, waiting for the meeting to start.
Well, we needed, we had, we had some, a lot of input, we needed from you on some major laws that the councils. Some funny moves tonight. Okay, thank you, everybody.